Workshop meeting. As you see, our chairman is not here right now, neither is Commissioner Lowery. So I will be conducting the meeting until our chairman arrives, if he does arrive before this meeting or the general or the regular meeting. But we will begin our meeting, the approval of the agenda. Does everybody seen that? Does anybody need to add or table anything? I will say that Stephen Bonico has some stuff to come up later and talk to us about, but he's got one because of the nature of it and what it deals with, with the EPA, EPD, whatever that needs to be in the regular meeting and not in the work session. So he will be coming up at some point in the, if that's all right with everybody.
Somebody like Dee.
Is everybody good with the agenda?
Mm-hmm.
With that change? Approval of our previous meeting. Everybody's received that? Any changes or questions about it? Hearing none, we will add that to the consent agenda. Personnel, personnel status report. It's the usual moves, I guess, and bring it up. We're still about where we were last month. We got five, we're down five on the overall employees of the county. Some part-time, some full-time. Everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
All right, then we go to number four. Board appointments and or proclamations, if any. We do not have any board appointments this month. We do have two proclamations and a number four A is a Breast Cancer Awareness Month of October. I know this is something we've done every year and there's, I think, the 18th of October is Breast Cancer Awareness Day. And there will be a lot of pink at different things. I know some of our football teams, our football cheerleaders and all will be doing that. And because one in eight, one in eight ladies will, are subject to breast cancer. So it's very important. Everybody good with that proclamation?
Mm-hmm.
All right, the consent agenda. The next one is Fire Prevention Week, October the 6th through the 12th, 2024. And that's something very important. I think there's 388,000, having looked at that proclamation, fires that are answered every year. Would like to throw out that a lot of the home fires, most of them are at least three out of every 10 are started with cooking. So we would ask people to please be careful. Sometimes, a lot of times it's going off and leaving things on the stove and, and that kind of thing. So we will be observing that week as Fire Prevention Week. Everybody good with that proclamation?
Yes.
Yep. Put it on consent agenda. All right, we have the approval of Spots Capital Equipment under number five. Mr. Ansel Smith could not be here, and I was just asked by him over the phone if I would just mention what this is. It does fall under this, but in, Robin, you tell me if this is all right with, it was with them at least. It has to do with station number four, which is North Dade Fire Department. They have some equipment that's kind of wore out and old. They want to put it like on Gov. Deals. And when that money, when that sales and comes back, they want to buy a piece of equipment that will help their fire department with the ISO ratings or the North Dade Fire Department with ISO ratings. So at this time, they're not asking for money. They are asking for us to allow them to put, for Don to put that on Gov. Deals.
So is it, is it county equipment?
It is, it is.
So we're asking to declare it surplus, right?
Surplus, yes.
Yes.
I just talked to Don, he called me about it because Ansel was not going to be able to be here. And they wanted to be able, I think, to bring it up to the meeting maybe next Monday. So, but that's what it was, not asking for any money. It's just to have the, so we can do that. We can give them the
We could give them
Well, so I think the issue of spending the money received is kind of a different issue, but we can declare it surplus and sell it and then we can make a decision.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that, but that is during ten. They would take proceeds from the sale of that and be, but we just need to declare it surplus so they can be put out for sale. So if that's all right, Robin, if we're all right with that, we'll put it on the consent agenda if it needs to.
So we've got sell fixed assets. Is that, is that what we're talking about or is we're talking about something different?
I think we're talking about two things. The sale of the assets and then to use that money to purchase something else.
Okay, I think, honestly, I think let's declare it surplus and then we can make that decision.
Right, we would make that decision at, yeah.
After it's sold.
Okay. Okay.
They would have to come back to the board and ask.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, they would come back once this is all done and it may be weeks and weeks out or months out. It's not something that they're going to necessarily be back even next month for. It's just, the main part of this is to be able to declare that surplus so they can go ahead, which they, you know, could have done regardless, you know, or if they saw the need, I guess. But just don't, just make sure we don't need to table it, but if that's okay, then we'll put that
No, we can declare it surplus.
Put that on consent agenda to declare, I think he told, two pieces of equipment for. All right. If everybody's good with that, then put it on consent agenda. We go to number six. The approval of ARPA money, if any. We do not have anything under that tab, so we'll go to number seven. The Historic Courthouse Restoration Project, Mr. Cole Edkins. I don't, that cold has come here tonight, so. They are working on it every day though, and everything over there looking good, but. So we'll, we have number eight is
Six, somewhere towards the end of September. We were able to throw out some more sales here and there and have a really good discussion with them and things went really well and we were able to, when we got our adjusted sales ratio, our CLD is now to 14.91, which is a passing CLD, so our appeal was successful.
Good job.
So that's a good step in the right direction.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Paula. That sounds good. I know most of it, it kind of goes over our head, but it was, it's a serious thing and for every county in 159 counties. And we have number nine is the Elections Building Constructed Project Monthly Update. Other than the fact that there hasn't been anything done since the last time, we do have some gravel down there to spread and hopefully be able to pour some concrete pretty soon. I am not privy to the information if we have the plans, the construction plans back. Phillip, I don't know if you, if you talked to Ted.
I haven't heard anything.
But that, that is what we're waiting on is actually to get the plans to be able to start on it, so. But it is hopefully going to come along. Then we have number 10, we have a report from Limestone Valley, RCND, USDA, NRCS and all the other initials in the alphabet under Mr. Stephen Bonico.
I noticed there's a little, little fewer people here today. They heard I was on the agenda multiple times.
Yeah.
So a few different things, we kind of wearing multiple hats here. First want to make the, make the commission and the public writ large aware, as we do have a lot of agricultural producers, that we did enter drought status. I know that's hard to imagine after the amount of rain that we just had, but we, we were in drought status and the Farm Service Agency has initiated the livestock forage protection program. It is a disaster program. Our farmers who have been around a while are familiar with it. They need to contact the Farm Service Agency in order to get their paperwork processed and that a lot, a lot of folks just call it hay money. It has a fancy name. There's a fact sheet out there that you, you can get to, but generally speaking, that same process was initiated last January. It's the same process we used in 2019 and 2016. Anytime that we hit a drought status for a certain duration or intensity, as the drought monitor states it, those dollars become available as relief to farmers to help offset the cost of having to buy in grass and forage. So, hey. So that being said, there's information about the different costs on that, that fact sheet and you, you can do the math on how many acres you have or how many head of livestock you have and what classification and, and then work with the Farm Service Agency to make sure your records are, are correct. So just wanted to make sure that anybody who hasn't heard about it yet, Farm Service Agency has been sending out information about it, but generally it's there. Take advantage of it. They're your tax dollars. They took them from you, go get some back. Bring them home. So that is, that is the one update. The other update, I'll put, I'll, I'll jump to another branch of the USDA. Natural Resource Conservation Service is accepting applications. They have not announced their cutoff yet for their annual environmental quality incentive program, but knowing that we do have a lot of pastures that have been impacted by drought, knowing that that program does allow for the replanting of pastures, I want, want to, and I do this every year, bring it forward, let the, let the public know. We have the, the EQUIP Environmental Quality Incentive Program. All, all the, all the letters and all the vowels and the EQUIP, no U. That program is available. It helps people with fencing, rotational grazing, pasture replanting, high tunnels for growing crops, irrigation, water pipelines to get supply to places that you may need it on the farm. And so if you're not familiar with that program, my office is over in the Old Depot. Feel free to give me a call. I freely give out my cell phone number, 423-421-2543. That's posted on the website. It's, the information's available. We have applications. The sooner you get those in, the sooner they'll be considered. It's a competitive cost share basis, so just letting the public know. I know we've got new people that are buying farms, moving into the area and may not be familiar with it, but that's a federal program. I manage it for the county. Would be happy to walk some people through it if they're interested in looking at ways that they can improve their community as well as their operation. The, let's see, I think I got one more thing on the docket here, which I will put on the Limestone Valley hat for. So I'm switching from USDA to our partnership with a nonprofit, formerly a branch of the USDA, now a nonprofit, which is Limestone Valley RCND, Resource Conservation and Development Council. Limestone, myself being their director in partnership with Dade County and 10 other counties. We were able to attend a conference last month where we had a conversation with program lead at the Tennessee Valley Authority. They mentioned the desire to do a project in the state of Georgia on TVA-regulated waters, which Lookout Creek is in their management area. I went and talked to the Historic Commission about the, the potential of doing the project. The project that we're discussing is the Sittins Mill Dam. Sittins Mill Dam, if you've ever, if you've been out there, it's a great place to visit. It's next to the 60 acres that the county owns on Sales Lane. There's, there's rocks falling off, there's trees growing out of it. When we have major floods, you might see another rock fall off. It is a place that some people like to go swim and fish, but the historic site there is, is a wonderful treasure in our community where if you've ever read the historic marker, a lot of, a lot of things have happened there. In talking to the Historic Commission and TVA, we are proposing, and we would need the county commission to be in agreement with this, to partner with TVA to remove a portion of the dam and allow the creek to flow freely there. It would, it would increase the ability to paddle the creek. There would still be fishing options and so forth there. You know, we've seen that in other dams removal. We would memorialize the history. Any partnership with TVA is going to be top quality. They're going to be, they're, you know, they're talking about doing all that. And because I couldn't help myself, we said, well, you, we want something in return. So if we were to partner with them on doing that, the discussion is that TVA would also give us two canoe launches, top quality, public canoe access to the creek. So not only would we be increasing the flow of the creek to allow people to paddle through, we also would be giving them recreational access points for that and all of the associated signage and so forth, as well as the historic marker that would go with the, with the dam, the dam adjustment. It wouldn't be a full removal because we need to memorialize that history there. So bringing that before the commission. We have a letter of support that you can see up on the screen from the historic, from the Historic Commission. They voted unanimously to support, to support exploring this partnership with TVA, but as it adjoins county property, it would be a county decision. So just bringing that before you guys for consideration. And at that, I don't have any more. Are there any questions?
Would the commission, the Historic Commission be the one to continue to pursue that?
So with Limestone's experience on fluvial geomorphology and the such, we would volunteer to be the point on it. And we would work with the Historic Commission to make sure that it was memorialized properly. And then I'd say we'd work with the county, but as the Natural Resources Department Chair for the county, I suppose I'd work with myself in order to keep, keep the county, keep the county abreast of where it is and no, no agreements would be made with TVA that weren't first, you know, cleared with the, the commission. There is, there's a shippo process with the state of Georgia that I'm actually helping Whitfield County through right now on a project that they have going on on one of their dams. And so we would be going through all the proper state channels to address the historic preservation, to address the environmental concerns that might be there. And, and there's a, there's a, there's a lot of permits involved. So we have experience with that. You know, I'm, I'm managing the permits on four different projects for two other counties right now, wearing that limestone hat. So being familiar with it, we would be more than happy to take on that technical aspect in partnership with the Historic Commission and the county.
So the, when, I know I've seen them clean out like that bridge down there. That's the state that does that, right?
The state does that as a right of way on 136. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I was just kind of curious about that.
The, the log jam?
Yeah.
Yeah. And hopefully the new bridge is going to address some of that log jam.
Yeah. And then what would we have to do to, to secure that?
We would, we would just need the, the commission to agree to move forward in a cooperative partnership with Limestone and TVA. There, at this point is basically, we would be going to TVA telling them that we have approval. If, if the commission were to approve, we would, if, if we approve, TVA then would give us the details. We would review the details, make sure that they're congruent with our goals and objectives. If they're congruent with our goals and objectives, we would then contractually work with them. They would allocate funds, which either could flow through the nonprofit or the county, depending on, you know, I, I would, I would look to the clerk's discretion on that. And then depending on where the money flowed, flowed through, that we would project manage it and get it done.
Right, okay. And then the, you said two?
Two, our discussion was two canoe launches.
Okay.
I think if we had got another martini in them, we could have got a third.
So that space is
That was a joke, not for the record.
That space is, you know, it's just right there. So how, where, in what direction? I don't think I'm being clear.
Where do we want to put the canoe launches?
Yes.
Yeah.
So would that be an option of where that goes as long as it's county access?
So my litmus test is, is it public access?
Right.
That's Stephen putting on his hat saying, hey, if we're spending public money, let's make sure it's public access.
Right, right.
There's a couple of different potential locations we could put one. I think one natural location is at the dam because we can co-locate historic marker and reuse some of the really cool rock there
Right.
to help with the canoe launch.
Well, that was my hope, but it would also improve that area.
That's right.
Would be what I would, would want to see.
That's right. So our goal would be to improve, improve the area there for public access, improve the county property there, improve the historic marking of the site, as well as improving the, the access to the water.
Right.
The, the second location, we discussed the potential of doing it down on the IDA property, obviously in coordination and collaboration with the IDA behind the old treatment facility there. I, I would have dreams and desires of seeing that treatment facility turned into a public recreation bathroom and access.
Okay.
You know, that could be in conjunction with a trail. There's a lot, there's a lot of a grand, there's a grand vision there for
Yeah, yeah, I know, I got it.
For connectivity. That could be one potential site. It could also be a potential site at the other end of, of any potentially purchased land that the county may partner with in the future.
Right, right.
So there's a lot of different places that you can do it. My, my key interest would be in making sure that we create nodes that are achievable for families. So, you know, if that means that a float is one hour, two hours, four hours, that we don't just set our points far apart and hope people can make it.
Well, and also consideration would be parking because that road is not very, there's not enough room for barely one car, leave them two, so.
That's right.
Keeping, keeping that in mind.
I think there's several considerations that need to be looked at there that can be part of the discussion with TVA. You know, I know that we helped with the Jenkins parking lot there and I think that it turned out great for the community and, you know, TVA likes to look good, so do I.
Yeah.
It's hard when I look in the mirror, but, you know, when our work looks good, it works out. But at, at the end of the day, I think we can come to an agreement with TVA that addresses our needs and, and works for our objectives, which would be public access and getting more people recreating on the creek. I have people calling me from all over North Georgia and in Chattanooga that, that ask, hey, is there any place I can get on the creek? And we don't have great public access to Lookout Creek. And if we increase public access, there's a case study in the mid 1990s, the Conne Sag River Alliance, so Whitfield and Murray County, Conne Sag River Alliance in partnership with Limestone Valley RCND put in canoe launches throughout the Conne Sag River. Major concern on the Conne Sag at that time was landowner trespass. Landowner trespassing went down by double digits. It, it just, it almost went, I won't say it went away.
Yeah.
But it almost went away because we gave people access points. They knew where it was on the map and they could plan accordingly. Similarly, you know, I mentioned having it be achievable distances. You know, having achievable distances allows for EMS to know where, if somebody's having a heart attack on the creek and they call 911, they're able to say, we just passed this location. It gives key markers because when you're down in the creek, you go, there's trees. I don't, I don't know where I am. Just send help. In, on the Etowah River just south of us, they ended up putting mile markers up, just like they do on the highway, so that people could call in EMS and they knew which boat rent to go to. We're not that big, but the point being, we should plan to take care of our citizens with achievable locations for takeout. Trips that are fun, not frustrating. And I think that we can start out with a couple of nodes with TVA money and see our blue way, what they call canoe trails and such, see our blue way grow into something that people want to come and visit.
Yep, I think that's fantastic.
Was I long-winded enough that there's no more questions?
I can hardly wait till our next meeting to get you back.
What is your timeframe for your answer? Are you looking for it tonight or?
Phillip, you know me well enough to know I want to know yesterday.
I figured that.
Yeah. I, I would, I would like to know something sooner than later. TVA is currently at the table and while they're at the table, I'd like to remind them that they're, they're at the table and we'd like to eat. But, you know, ultimately, that's at your discretion on when you want to say yea or nay. You have the information now. If you, if you'd like to pursue what a contract with TVA looks like, I will pursue it. If you, you know, that doesn't mean we're signing one, but if you want to pursue that, then I will move to the next step. If you don't, then I will wait till you say to go.
Are we able to do that?
Is that something that we can do on, when, all we've seen on this right now is
The letter from the
Yeah, and so as I understand, he, he's asking for authorization to begin negotiations, not to actually agree anything.
Right.
Is that right?
Yeah, I, I would, I would like to see from them dollars and cents on what they're willing to commit to the project. If they're only willing to give us 100 grand, I'm, I'm going to tell them we want more.
Yeah.
So, you know, TVA, TVA wants to see a good project. We want a good project. We need, if, if the commission authorizes moving forward and says that we, we have a favorable, a favorable decision to explore, because their first response to me was, well, if the commission is willing to move forward, we need to do a study. I mean, TVA doesn't jump into anything.
Well, I, I personally have no problem with that. I mean, you know, asking for money doesn't cost you anything. It's after you get the money that, that costs you more. But to find out what they want to do, because we did purchase 61 acres on the creek, so we have a lot more access than just a little point at the, at the dam itself.
That's right.
On that end of going. So I, I think it's in our best interest to at least look and see what they've, you know, anything we can do to, as I say, to better ourselves and to, and to begin to put that property or around that property, something else to do. And so.
I think it sounds great. I don't have any problem with it.
I'm good with going after it.
All right, then, put that on.
I understand, I understand my marching orders are go get money from TVA.
What you wanted.
Okay.
Don't leave right now because we want you to come back.
I'll be, I'll be back in a few minutes.
All right. Number 11 is a letter of intent and grants application of Dade County Community Forest Trust for Public Land. Mr. Hartline, please take the field.
Noel has the presentations. We've, we've seen it before, once before, and he's going to give it to the public now so they can look at it and then maybe answer any questions that's not been answered since the last meeting.
The, the slide deck, I think. Thank you. Really appreciate your time and interest in this opportunity, commission and, and the public of Dade County. So Trust for Public Land is a national conservation organization. We've been around for 50 years. We've been working in, in Northwest Georgia for nearly 30 years. Some of our earliest projects here were when the Drummond coal land went up for auction in 1998, Trust for Public Land alongside the Lula Lake Land Trust acquired 3,000 acres of that and worked to convey that to Cloudlin Canyon State Park, which forms the northern portion of Cloudlin Canyon State Park. We've also been really heavily involved in trail projects like the Tennessee Riverwalk, South Chickamauga Creek Greenway, protecting Stringer's Ridge, which is a great example of a community forest in a more urban setting. And I'd like to present more about the community forest concept, what it means, how Trust for Public Land would like to work with Dade County on this opportunity. So a community forest is an open space project that has four key components, that community forests are locally owned and managed by local governments and that the use and management of that land is driven by the community. And that another core component of this is it's not just owned by the community, but it benefits the community. Often that looks like benefits from recreation, watershed protection, and in some cases, timber, sustainable timber harvest. That drive derives revenue for the community where it makes sense. And then the final element is that the land is permanently protected. It would always remain as a community forest forever. Next slide, please. And these communities, these, these community forests have significant benefits to the community, including that they can bolster local economies, they can help increase visitor spending. And I included a number here in, in reaching out to stakeholders in advance of today's meeting. I talked to a, a race promoter who puts on a trail race at Cloudlin Canyon and he shared some of the demographics for the race participants. And this number says 780 runners, but their total number of people they bring into Dade County is over 1,000 people for a race that happens at the calendar year end. And they come from 300 cities and multiple countries to recreate in Dade County. And he, Sean, the race promoter, said, if there were more opportunities for folks to enjoy the natural beauty of Dade County and to spend their dollars, we will bring more people to Dade County to spend dollars. It's also really important for business recruitment. It's also really important for business recruitment. We have seen, just across the state line in Alabama, the state of Alabama's focus with Innovate Alabama is to use outdoor recreation as a key tool for recruiting and retaining talent, since many tech sectors are looking for quality of life through outdoor recreation, and supporting job creation and diversified economic opportunity. And so, I think the core element here is the economic opportunity is to bring benefits to Dade County residents. This doesn't mean, and at the same time, there isn't a need to think about changing the character of Dade County. This land is what it is now. It will stay that way. And I think that's a really important thing, if you can bring benefits in without people having to stay here in the long run. Community forests really also help improve quality of life, both physical activity, mental well-being, benefit from having close to home access to nature, as well as the social benefits of getting to know your neighbor and the community pride that comes with having an asset that is owned by your local government. Next slide. How does local government go about acquiring a community forest? Trust for Public Land is a nonprofit organization. We help facilitate the transaction. We don't own the property in the long run. Our job is to help get these lands into public ownership. So, we look at a property prioritization, figuring out where an opportunity makes sense. And then, we often work with the sellers to secure the property, and then work on securing funding to purchase it. We then support the community planning effort, finalize the acquisition, and then also support the activation and improvements that make that property beneficial to the community. Next slide, please. A little bit more about what it looks like to work with Trust for Public Land. We've completed 4,000 real estate transactions since 1972. And that, one of our key roles is to secure the financial commitments from local philanthropies, state, and federal grant sources. So, since 2020, Trust for Public Land has secured $14 million of Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Program funds for community partners. And then, most recently, in Walker County, we helped secure a $900,000 Appalachian Regional Commission grant for the Battlefield Connector Trail. We are very flexible with how we work, and to work within an agency's needs and procedures. And then, we also have national expertise for very complicated transactions that we can bring to the table to support Dade County in this project. Next slide. So, I want to talk a little bit more about community planning, because I have heard that like, "How will the community be involved? How did this come to be?" And that's really critical. That's one of the commitments for Trust for Public Land nationally, is that we put community at the center of our work. And so, we, at the very beginning of a community forest planning process, which will happen after we complete the due diligence and we secure the funding and commitments for funding, we'll start looking at what are the, what does the community have in terms of resources, interests, skills, talents, and groups that are already present in the community. We've already started a little bit of that engagement so far. Culturally, what are the, what's the cultural history of the place? What activities, celebration histories, artistry exists in these communities? And then, physical, how can the surrounding landscape and urban features impact how this property is utilized? And then, economic, what are the businesses that might support this? And then, what businesses might benefit from a relation, a better relationship with the community forest? And that could look at everything from job training to businesses that might be a concessionaire providing access to things like Lookout Creek. We often work with engaging partners and collaborators, and over the last few weeks have been able to connect with some local trail organizations. There is interest in supporting this project. And we've had good, early, positive engagement with Cloudlin Canyon State Park about this opportunity. The Friends of Cloudlin Canyon State Park, they're a state sanctioned friends and volunteer group. They have, they have a very similar arrangement for trail management on adjoining tracks to Cloudlin Canyon State Park to support trail maintenance, which is, they have a critical skill set. And that group is, we would need to work through the state park system to pursue a similar arrangement with, if Dade County was to acquire this property. But there's a clearly defined path that's already been utilized in this community with Cloudlin Canyon State Park. And they said they're willing to explore that process. And then, the local mountain bike chapter in Chattanooga, the Southern Offroad Bicycle Association, their organization is interested in supporting, on the consulting side, the trail planning elements of how to assemble a trail network that's sustainable, that requires minimal maintenance, but also provides something that's a draw. We'd be seeking public input on around how these properties and how this property is managed. We'll define the community priorities that we hear, and then we'll create a comprehensive land management plan that outlines how this property would provide long-term benefit to the community. Next slide, please. So, there's a couple, I want to dive into some of the questions that we would want to be answering with the community's input through the land management plan. And that is, who's going to own the land long-term? And that's the critical thing. If this is Dade County Community Forest, how are we setting this property up for very long-term management? And then, who will be responsible for the upkeep and maintenance of the public use facilities? Questions around friends groups, nonprofit partners, that's a critical component that would have to get addressed in the management plan. And then, how will the maintenance be funded? It's another critical component. Many community forest projects in other communities, they use a portion of the proceeds, if they are harvesting timber, to go back into maintaining that property, as well as going into the general revenue of the community. I'll share an example from a very small community, and I believe it was Maine or New Hampshire, that had a community forest. There were 200 people in this town. They had a large wind event, very similar to, you know, a hurricane that we might experience here, just tragically hit North Carolina. The salvaged timber sale of that property's damaged trees was a million dollar windfall for the county, or for that community, which helped them restore their town hall. So, it can be an asset for a community, as well as a financial asset, as well as a recreation asset. Who will facilitate programming in the park? Who are the nonprofit partners and/or county staff to support that? And then, who will manage those economic activities that would exist? Next slide. So, this is a map of the proposed community forest property. You see the outline in red. Cloudlin Canyon is the large green blob on the right. And then, Four Fields Ball Park is the green polygon to the left. It's a little hard to see here, but the county-owned property off of Sales Lane sits directly north of the proposed community forest track. And the Highway 136 bisects the property. And then, the property's western boundary, just about two miles of Lookout Creek is the western boundary of this property. So, when thinking about opportunities for Lookout Creek access, this could provide some ample opportunities for a float from this property into town and then beyond. Another couple of elements here, you know, the Four Fields Park, the green outline shows the portion of that property that's publicly accessible. You know, it is really close in proximity to the community forest. And Trust for Public Land often works alongside communities and landowners to explore opportunities for public access that still allow landowners to provide for their own use. So, if that's something that could be of interest down the road, Trust for Public Land would be a willing partner to explore that. This property is roughly 650 acres, might be a few acres more, depending on a final survey, which will be a core component of the due diligence. And it is, from talking with Cloudlin Canyon State Park, that there is, there is interest in trail connection between the park and this property, especially as they think about how to relieve pressure at the Sittens Gold Trailhead, which often can get a little tight when there's a lot of vehicles parked in a very small parking area. All right, next slide. So, this is a very, I'm going to run through this very quickly. The pathway to fund this is through what we would think of as a tiered grant proposal. We would pursue, we would utilize local matching funds through a Dade County commitment to go pursue, secure an initial grant. More than likely, what would be the ideal first grant would be land-water conservation funding. That would generate $1 million between the county commitment and that land-water conservation. And then, we would take those two funds to go pursue the second tier, which you think of as a layer cake. It's the next layer on top, which is another one-to-ones. You'd take the $1 million and then leverage that to receive another $1 million. So, for the, every dollar that Dade County commits, we would be raising another $3 in public funding to support the project. And then, a third and future option, and actually, in these first tier, there's two opportunities that would be worthwhile to pursue, the first being land-water conservation funds, second being US Forest Service Community Forest Program. And then, the third option would be Georgia Outdoor Stewardship. But that would be not available until next fall at the earliest. Next slide. And then, the steps to complete this, we'd work with Dade County right now on securing initial local matching funds and some philanthropic commitments that are contingent upon Dade County's commitment to the project. We'd secure an option to purchase this land from the Georgia Alabama Land Trust. We'd work alongside Northwest Georgia Regional Commission and Dade County to craft these grant proposals on behalf of Dade County. And then, we would then begin our due diligence for the property as we start hearing back on these successful grant opportunities. Funding would get awarded to Dade County. More than likely, it would be, some of that could start in probably summer of '25 into spring of '26. Some of these project, grant proposals take some time to hear back. We'd be kicking off community forest planning as we are hearing back, "Hey, this is positive. This is making it to the governor's desk," that sort of thing. Close the transaction. We've finished the community forest plan. And then, we would work on helping manage grant-funded infrastructure improvements with the goal of having a functioning trail system in early 2027. Next slide. Thank you so much for the opportunity. Open to any questions from the Commission and from the public?
So, to start off on our, we're looking at a half a million dollars. And for me, I want to come, part of it to come out of hotel motor tax and splosh money. But to get it started, for you to actually start going after grants, October the 31st, we would have to be willing to commit our due diligence money, which is around, what, $50,000?
Yeah, $50,000 for due diligence.
And that covers appraisal, a survey, title work, and what else?
Environmental.
Environmental, okay. And then, you have someone willing to help cover your costs and time to start going after the grants. Is that correct?
We do, exactly. We have a local foundation who's willing to contribute a $50,000 grant to cover our time to start with. But that is contingent upon Dade County Commission commitment.
So, unfortunately, Dawn is not here tonight. My goal was to take the due diligence money out of ARPA money, use the remainder of which we had in there, which last month we had around $50,000 or $60,000. I was wanting to take the remainder of that ARPA money to do our due diligence, so that you start going after the grants. And then, agree to this, because this money's not something we have to pay for next month. It's, you're talking about two years out. And then, once we get the amount for the property and the contract back from Georgia Alabama Land Trust, then we can discuss, do we agree to their terms? Did they put something out that we do not like? Do we agree to the deal that they're giving us? And then, at the end, if we don't like what they're offering, we don't have to take, we don't have to do the deal, correct?
That's correct. There's a couple of components that are important with pursuing the land-water conservation funds. If, that that would require a resolution by the county to say, "We are, we will obligate the funds if awarded." And that's necessary to submit the pre-submital grant application.
Can you explain what that is to everybody?
The resolution?
Well, not the resolution, the, who you're working with to get, explain what they do and
Yes. So, that's, the land-water conservation fund is a, it's a federal pass-through grant. It's money generated through offshore oil and gas leases, $900 million annually. And the states, each state receives a portion of that. And Georgia's portion is available to local governments every other year. So, that's, it's a two-year grant cycle. So, this year is land-water conservation funding. And if we wanted to pursue it, if we missed this window, which would close on October 31st, we would have to wait two years to reapply for land-water conservation funding. That is administered by Georgia DNR. And there is a resolution that specifies if we are committing to our grant to provide match if we are awarded the grant. That would, the money doesn't have to be in escrow at that point. It's just Dade County is good for the match if awarded the land-water conservation funding. And to my knowledge, I don't believe Dade County has pursued a land-water conservation funding grant opportunity to date. And so, it would be competitive, seeing as LWCF likes to invest in more communities and not just go back to those that they've invested so far.
And is there any stipulations to that grant?
There are stipulations to that grant, including that there is a permanent protection of the property that either comes in the form of a deed restriction, or often in the form of a conservation easement who's held by a nonprofit organization that's qualified to hold conservation easements. And that's a really critical component of land-water conservation funding. If the property ceases to be used for the purposes that it was set aside for, there's a very arduous process to get back into compliance for state grants. And so, when Trust for Public Land works alongside communities, that's a really critical component, is sort of how this long-term protection is actually built into the project. So, Georgia DNR is the one that administers that funding. We would need, Dade County would be the applicant. Trust for Public Land alongside Northwest Georgia Regional Commission would craft the application. And Dade County would submit the application, the pre-submital on the 31st. And then, we would support each step of the way, Dade County, through the application process.
And who would be the one writing and doing that application?
Trust for Public Land.
Okay.
And the same with each of the other grant opportunities.
Okay.
And we've worked the same process with Northwest Georgia Regional Commission on the Walker County Battlefield Connector project, and we talked with their staff today. There would need to be a formal request of the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission from Dade County saying, "We are intending to submit, you know, a proposal for this." And then, Sam and team are ready to go.
We're currently at $594,000 in ARPA, but we have committed $580,000. So, there's not $50,000 there.
Well, my question I get, and a lot of this just goes over, I'll just be honest, it goes over my head, because I don't know, you know, we see this, and it still is not clear, because we don't get anything in our hands saying, "Here's what you will get." We don't get anything in our hands saying, "Here's what it will cost you," or "may cost you." If we're just talking about, basically, it's sounding to me like I'm, sometimes dumber than a rock. I'm not like Tim Waltz. I'm not a knucklehead. But that we're putting up earnest money for somebody to do something, to get everything started. And if the grants don't come through,
Yeah, that was the next question.
Our earnest money's gone, and we don't have anything. And again, I made it clear last month, I don't have a problem. I'd love to see that preserved from now on and forever. But I have a problem with not knowing the more than, it seem like I'm, my ability to learn. And I've got two more meetings after tonight. And this, we're looking at the 31st of October, and this is the 3rd of October, to make such a big decision, because of when it happened. It's not your fault it happened at this time, but you just have to think. And the gentleman sitting right over here is going to sit in this seat, as I said last month, and I have a problem with putting him a half a million or two, three million dollars in debt with the county.
First of all, let's don't call it debt, because we're not going to take a loan for it.
If we get the grants. I think we've done the grants long enough to know that they don't always come through.
Right. But if it doesn't come through, all we will have spent is the $50,000 for the appraisal, the survey, and the title work, and the environmental. That's it. If we don't get no grants, we don't give no money. That's all we're paying for.
$50,000, if we were doing this 50,000, if we were doing this tonight, $50,000 is all we're saying that we're...
That would be...
Or the 500, because, you know, I mean...
The, it's, the, the 500 would only be necessary if the grants are successful.
If we got the grants, that would be the match.
That would be the match.
And what are the chances that some of the, because again, sometimes grants don't, these, these federal grants, they come in a big omnibus bill and all that. Today, today, Mr. Mariokas told the country FEMA is broke. With all that just happened, worse than Katrina, a biblical proportion thing happens, all is well, but FEMA's out of money. Now, we can argue with why they're out of money, all we want to, but that's what he said. We don't have the money for all this. So when it comes down to it, would grants be based on something? I mean, I'm just trying to wrap my head around it.
Absolutely.
Grants don't always, we, we know that. You can just miss one word in a grant application and... They're, they, they look at them that close. I mean, they got, they got more attorneys than we've got. Looking at, looking at that thing through a magnifying glass, and they say, whoops, they didn't, is this a T or an L? Nope, they can't have it because, I mean, it's, it's sometimes, that's, that's a little preposterous. But sometimes it's that way with grants, they don't come through. And so if it's matching money, 50,000 to do what we're wanting to do, that's one thing. And we don't spend the 500,000 unless we get this. And then we would own that land.
You would own the land.
For 500,000 plus whatever. Because again, I, I was on this commission when we did this a few years ago for 61 acres. It happens to butt up to that land. And we only put $75,000 in it and got roasted. I was, we were barbecued. Now, it was more than, but that's all the county put in it.
Right.
Of county tax dollars, splosh, which is tax dollars. And I just don't, I want to know what we're getting personally. I'm just saying this for me now. I want to know what we're getting in not just a brochure. But if we're going, because we've only got, here we are, like I say, 27, 28 more days, and this month's gone, and that grant opportunity's gone, right?
That is, that is, yes, that grant opportunity for land-water conservation funding.
And that's the one that only comes around every two years.
It is, but there are other, there are other grant opportunities that we would pursue as well as we, we often work under option with the seller, where we build a relationship with the seller and saying, we are, our job is to go find the funding to complete this transaction. And so if we were unsuccessful with land-water conservation funding, the next opportunity would be the community forest program. The next would be Georgia Outdoor Stewardship. And we are interested in finding the, finding a pathway to funding through this in the long run. So it's not a, this one we are unsuccessful, the deal falls apart. We're in relationship with the landowner. We often will be under option, depending on how long it takes. It could be, it could be multiple years to make sure we get all the funding mechanisms established. We have a track record of being successful with state and federal grant opportunities with, in the state of Georgia, as well as in the state of Tennessee and across the country. So that is an expertise that we bring. We also, we can look to other funding mechanisms. And a, another option would be to look at private philanthropy to support a significant component of this project. We actually do have, as of last week, our partner in this, the, the landowner, the Georgia Alabama Land Trust, has received a grant from the Open Space Institute that will reduce the purchase price to Dade County for this, the purchase price for this, which would mean more of Dade County's match could be put into the improvements on the property. And that could be, that could be up to $200,000 in reduction of the purchase price because of a private philanthropic commitment to, to see this project across the finish line. So I understand, I understand the, your concerns there. And the, the obligation would be $50,000 for due diligence. And then the $500,000 would only come due if these grants are awarded in the future.
And if the grants were awarded, that's it. That's, that's all there, I mean, other than infrastructure and, or does that, all the trails? And, because I mean, I know there's foundations out there that do this. Broadhurst and you name them, they're, they're, and they love to do it. It's always been amazing to me, they like to throw money around it so I can go out and walk a trail. That's a great thing. Because that's what a lot of people want. They want somewhere where I can go and get away and not have the... So I do understand, I'm just trying to understand more. And I don't know what we're asking ourselves to do here tonight, if it's to okay $50,000 or, because, you know, where, where we can get it from.
Yep, the, the critical, the time-sensitive component is a resolution for a matching commitment for the land-water conservation fund. That's the, that would need to be, that resolution would need to be adopted by Dade County Commission before October 31st, if, if the county was willing to advance this project. That's the, that's the, the critical time-sensitive nature. The, the due diligence, amazing. We, we are going to be getting an appraisal on this property and in this month as a component of our pre-submital packet for land-water conservation fund.
So I think, I mean, I feel, just with the calls that I've had and the conversations and what Robert is saying is, there's, we don't have something that says, okay, there's this at the top. You know, who, who is, who's fighting for us to make sure they're giving us the right price? You know, who's, who's doing that background on, on all that? And I know that you're saying that we're going to get a survey and all of those things, but we're paying for that. So I would hope that we're going to get all those things. But it's kind of a, a pre-jump on that, I feel like, you know? And that's kind of the calls that I'm getting is, why, why can't we have that stuff to look at right now? You know, so...
I understand. So our, right now, the, the, the purchase price by Georgia Alabama Land Trust was 1.82 million. And we are providing, we're updating, and that's, for Trust for Public Land, we, we have a policy within the organization that we do not pay any more than fair market value for any transaction. And it's our job to negotiate a transaction that works in the benefit of our, of our public partner. And with the Open Space Institute grant, we're still working out the details of what that looks like in reduction of the purchase price. But it, we feel confident that it would be at least a six-figure reduction beyond below what Georgia Alabama Land, Land Trust acquired the property for. So we're, we're fighting to bring you the, the most economical project to stretch Dade County's dollars as far as, as far as we can. There are other components to this that could bring further in-kind support for this if the property appraises for more than what Dade County paid for it.
Is, could possibly pay for. We haven't paid, we haven't paid for it.
Yeah, the, the, if the property appraises for more than the Georgia Alabama Land Trust acquired it for.
Right, okay.
That could be potential in-kind match that stretches...
That you would be able to talk them down, so...
Well, that we would be able to bring into the grant proposal.
For on the grant.
To more, to more.
And then you say that you're being funded by a private group?
We're being private, a, a private foundation who is here, who's based in, in Northwest Georgia and in the Chattanooga area.
Okay, so would they be willing to take half of theirs and put it into that 50,000? So that we could, that would be taken away from you guys, right? Because they're, they're paying you to do this.
They are paying our staff time to do this. And there is another component of a professional service agreement down the road where 50,000 will not cover all of what it will take to do this project over multiple years. It's a, it's a pretty complicated process. But if we were to look at, so you're saying a cost share in the due diligence with the foundation is what you would...
Yeah, I mean, if they're willing to, to pitch in money for you, why wouldn't they pitch in money for us?
Because they want us to see us put our money where our mouths are. So this, this didn't come up this month, this has been going on for four months. We talked about it in executive session three months ago, we talked about it last month. Now we're talking about it now. I'm going to talk dollars and cents. So we want to talk about appraisal. If we can get the same people that appraised our 61 acres, our property's going to be worth about five or six million. So we've got a pretty good match because we've paid $8100 an acre for 61 acres across the creek where we're asking $2,800 acre for this piece of property.
Why did they charge us to get that appraisal?
Which one? For the 61 acres? I don't know, we, we spent $8100 an acre for the 61 acre, that, that reservoir property.
Well, I'm more curious about what it would cost to get, like, does, does it go over the 50,000 or...
The appraisal, it ain't, it's not on this slide. I'll go to this right here.
You know what I mean, like...
Yeah, we, we've got, I mean, we have an appraiser, we don't, we're, they're working on it. We're working on a, a cost of that right now to update that to the yellow book standard, which is the federal appraisal standard. And it would be, it would be certainly less than 10,000 for the appraisal. And that's the first, that's the first component.
I could see the survey being quite expensive because of the travel.
From what he had here last time, he was showing 10,000 on appraisal, 5,000 for site, for a phase one environmental site assessment, 15,000 for a survey, and about 5,000 for title work.
Okay, yeah, that's, sounds...
So we're at about 35,000 on that. So 50,000 gives us some leeway on each one of them because we don't, we don't know their numbers. But for me, being sitting in this seat for five years, we get roasted for not doing our due diligence. That is what we're doing here on the 50,000. We're saying that, yes, down the road, we're willing to spend a half a million to get $2 million. That's a pretty good return on your money. If we can't get the grants, we didn't spend the, the half a million dollars, and now we were at this 50,000.
And honestly, if we aren't to the point where we are advancing through LWCCF, we'll know next spring, we still have over a year to complete the survey, the title, and the environmental. The critical due diligence that we need to do right now is the appraisal, which, you know, under $10,000, we would have that component.
And then after we have the appraisal, we could, you could set up some type of, uh, start some type of a contract or a written agreement of some sorts or, yeah. I think that that's kind of the problem.
Well, I mean, it is, you feel like otherwise it's a pig in a pothead.
Right, right, right.
I mean, you know, you buy a car, you buy a house, you buy anything, and you sit and look at all these lines of, where can we get that money? Can we get it, ARPA money?
No.
There's not that much left. And that's because we have, it's there, but it's all been earmarked.
It's been at some point from last month.
Can we use the hotel motel tax money? And can we use splosh?
I can look up the balance, but...
Splosh for purchase of the property, the, the...
But it'll be only the purchase, right? So like for the 500,000, if it come to that, we may be able to. I mean, I can, I can deal with 50 and then, and $50,000 and then somebody else. Going to be sitting here because like you say, it may be two years before anything.
Right, yeah.
You know, I mean, again, that's why to me, it looks like we're putting up earnest money.
We are, I mean, that's what...
To hold this, and we're not going to get it back if everything play out. But we are at $50,000, but we're not at 500 or, or more.
And it's, it's reimbursable as well. So you don't have to put the 50,000 all upfront. It's, we need to do the appraisal. That's a, that's a critical component to go pursue the land-water conservation funding, the first grant opportunity. Then the next one would come in January. And then after that...
So we could actually say $10,000 tonight's what we're going to approve, approve.
For, for the appraisal, yep. That's the, that's the first component of the due diligence.
Well, it's becoming a little more clearer than mud anyway, but to...
Well, it's, it's just like with anything. I mean, you, if you're going to invest in something, you want to know what it's worth. So you have to go out on a ledge a little bit to make sure that you have what you need to, that it's saying that it's going to come up and it's going to be this price, it's worth this much, and here's these things here. And so it's, you know, I mean, it's a big, it's a big piece of property that is an investment. I mean, so you do have to kind of take that step.
Well, I'd like to see us vote on it tonight, if y'all are willing to do that. We can set it aside and vote on it separately from everything else on the agenda, but I would like to vote on it if y'all are willing to.
Just have a quick question before, sorry. Can you go back a slide?
Certainly.
Can you go to the slide that says public input, please?
Yeah.
That has a step on it? I was looking at my phone, it was a little small.
Yeah, seek public input?
Well, there was like a series of steps that you had.
Oh, yeah. See, go, go forward. Let's see. Yeah, so this is, this is the community planning process.
Right, but wasn't, wasn't the word to say something like, I can't, I can't say the word.
Yeah, it says, seek, seek public input.
Right, so, so has that happened yet?
No, we're, we're not to that point.
I don't know if there's any kind of survey that the public can perceive that says, do we even want to pay money for this? Do we, I mean, right now, we have 61, I remember the number, but somebody else has 70, 70 acres, pretty much, in the reservoir property. We paid $500,000 for that, but it's, it's not a reservoir, it's a pumping patch. And the last thing that the public wants to pay for is another $500,000 for another pumping patch. Like, we just don't, like, I don't understand why any commissioner would want to buy forest land when we can't even develop our water land. You know, how did forests become more important than water? Like, it's just sitting there, seriously. So I, I, I think public input is a really important thing to do, especially considering the history of Dade County with these kind of ban purchases and the land just sits there.
I, I completely understand your, your sentiment. And at the last, the thing that I really struggle with too is when, when a property is not being improved for public benefit and they sit. And that's not how Trust for Public Land operates. We, we are an action-based organization that provide, when we celebrate a rhythm cutting, that's a property that's providing public benefit when we're done, yes?
I have a general question regarding the tiered grant funding process.
Yes.
So if we put 500,000 and in time that we do groundwater, we're one to one, our 500 is not counting.
Yes.
If we go tier two on the United States Forest Service, did you say that was a three to one?
So it's another one to one.
And is that one to one on the 500,000 or is one to one on the mill?
One to one on the mill.
Right, so our 500,000 at that point is three X into 200, it's a million worth of value.
Exactly.
For $50,000, due diligence, front-end exploration.
Yeah.
Sorry, just to finish up, is there a way to get public input?
I agree with, I don't think, John, we're not to that point yet.
Right, we do a special meeting, like, once you get public input, then you do a special meeting?
This will all be done, this will all be done in a public meeting like we're in now, yes.
On the 31st, so you may at least meet your deadline, but at the same time, you've also met in public, you know, got the public involved.
So the way that we, we work on the, the community forest planning on the, on the public input is that process happens before the property closes. But early, right now, there's, there's so much, you know, that needs to happen to even get it ready to where it has. So we're, we're not talking about a purchase and sale agreement or a contract with Dade County to purchase this property tonight. This is a contingent commitment if the grants are awarded. And that's, that's when the...
And that's going to be slow-going. So there, each part will be, there'll be a meeting, there'll be, well, it'll go through the whole process.
And it's going to be, it almost will. A lot of a brand-new commission is not going to happen. Because I'm gone, Ted's gone. And because I'm gone, Ted's gone, so.
And it might even outlast Philip and I. I mean, it, it could go that long.
I agree. We're not to that point yet to start having public input when all we're doing is trying to do what we have to do to make sure we can do it and proceed, proceed for trying to get the grants.
Can we go back to the step of the project's completion?
Yeah, uh, that's further advancing a couple of slides. Next slide, one more. There we go. Yep.
So, before I become a commissioner, we was talking about the reservoir property, and they said, once we, once we've purchased the property, we're going to start on the reservoir, and that did not happen. This lays out the timeline and the timeframe of when, if this part, the land is purchased, when it would be done and the steps to get to where we need to be. And then it talks about opening up in twenty twenty-seven. The best we can do is have planning in place, do our due diligence, and move forward, and then take public input when we get started on getting the grants to be able to, to develop the land in the way that we want, that the public wants to see it used. And that's, for me, that is the best we can do. They're not going to sit on this land and ever to hold it for us to, for us to keep kicking it down the road. So, there, once again, I'd like to vote on it tonight. This has been a four-month process to get to this point. And it's been brought up, it was brought up last month. I've had good, good comments and good response from it. A lot of people, you know, I've had some people say they'd like to see it back on the tax, tax digest. But it is, as of January the first, it will be removed from the tax digest, period. Whether we buy it or not, it's already coming off the tax digest.
And it is a possibility. I'm not saying that we would go that route or the public would go that route. But we could vote on having sections or something with, with houses built if that's the route that the people wanted to go.
It would depend on the.
A lot of things. It would depend on a lot of things. I'm not saying that I'm for that at all, but I'm, you know, it is an option depending on what grants you're going for and how they, uh, what they ask for, so.
And, I mean, there are, there are studies that show where you have, where you have quality-of-life benefit projects and open space access like this, you will drive more tax value from adjacent properties because people want to be near.
Right.
These open spaces. So, that's a, that's a, when we think about the potential tax revenue, that's a side of the equation that doesn't require you to develop this property. That property helps influence you bringing in more tax revenue for your own properties.
And I will say this. I did have a question. I asked why, why I'm looking at this piece of property and not something on San Mountain. I don't know of any eight hundred acres on San Mountain that is for sale. I do know a piece that just sold. It did have a couple of houses on it, but it sold for five million dollars. So, the price point's way off from where this price is on this land of what just sold on San Mountain.
Well, I bet, I mean, we need to make a decision right now. We're talking about fifty thousand dollars. That's it.
Well, no, not necessarily. We're talking about.
I don't see doing that in.
The process of fifty thousand dollars.
But I don't see doing that in increments either, not coming back and saying, okay.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Now, this is five. Okay, now we need twelve more for this. You do the due diligence money, fifty, fifty thousand dollars, and that's done. And that may be all we ever spend because we don't know if the grants, if the grants don't come, the five hundred thousand never happens.
Yes.
And somebody gets that property. And it won't be Dade County.
Right.
Most likely.
But we do have, there is an agreement that you're, we're going, you're going through this process and with the owner and.
We are, yep.
Yeah.
So, we'll have, we'll have a letter of support, and we're working on our option terms right now.
Okay, so, yeah.
Those will be, those will be set, and we can come back and, and say, we're, we're under option. They're going to provide a letter of support for the land water conservation funding grant application.
Okay, that's, that makes me feel a lot better. I like that, yeah.
And we, we are in.
I didn't know what that word.
We're in, in constant communication with, with the owner currently, and they're very supportive of, of our.
Between our, our deputy clerk and our attorney, tell us what we're voting on. So, it can go into the minutes of the meeting and.
So, uh, they submitted a, a proposed resolution. Maybe, maybe I should, I should read that, okay, and, and be sure we're all clear on that, okay? At the regular meeting in Dade County, Georgia, a motion was made and duly seconded that Dade County agreed to submit a pre-application for funding from the Land and Water Conservation Fund. Dade County further agrees that in the event that Dade County's pre-application is recommended for funding by the Department of Natural Resources, that Dade County certifies and assures that it has ability and intention to finance its fifty percent of the total project cost and will move forward with due diligence to prepare or have prepared appropriate documentation required for a formal LWCCF, this Land and Water Conservation Fund application. I, it looked fine. The only thing I would say is, we say fifty percent, we probably want to put, uh, a limit of, I mean, less.
Up to.
Up to about, yeah.
And then the due diligence, the fifty thousand to do the due diligence to get it started.
But all we're doing, again, tonight is fifty thousand, and then the five hundred thousand. If they can, if they come back and say the forestry, whoever, whatever grant it was.
Yeah.
You didn't get it.
Yep.
Well, we'll hear from you.
Thank you for your problem.
We'll hear from you before then, right? Because we'll have, you'll get the appraisal first.
Yeah.
So, we'll have to, we'll hear something from.
That will be, the appraisal will be a part of the grant proposal packet that we're, that we're giving to Dade County for submission.
Yeah, so we'll hear something before, um.
I mean, but you'll, the, the commission will receive that grant proposal and the due diligence that is a component of, of that pre-submital.
Yeah.
Well, it, it's a whole lot better feeling to feel like you're doing due, due diligence to look into this and not let the opportunity go by. Since we own the adjoining property across the creek, and that only benefits us with the other side, all the way down almost to the recreation park.
Well, and to, I mean, there's just lots of, uh, opportunities for all of, all of that. So, it's, um, and, you know, also, it is, it's not, cut, like, if we're able to take it from hotel motel, it's not coming out of property taxes or any of those monies. So, I mean, I think it's a great way to, to use some of those dollars. And it's also on my mountain, so.
Can I share something before y'all decide to put it on the table? If it, if I'm able to.
We've allowed a couple of others. We.
Well, I, I, I'm not going to take too much time, but whenever, uh, the reservoir property was brought up, there were studies done before of if it's possible to live on the property, correct? There were studies done.
There, well, now, the water, the water authority did supposedly, I want everybody to understand, the water authority dropped out of that. We did not drop out.
Yeah.
They dropped out of what they were starting out to do, and we're going to sell the property. The county took over the loan so that we didn't lose that property. It's too valuable to this county.
Pay that amount.
It's still there. So, yes, there was.
Out the way the study was done for, whether you.
There, there was the initial things you have to do, yes.
And it's not that it couldn't ever be either, not that, that we're totally off subject, but it's not. Yeah, it's not even that it could not be. Of course, it's all just logistics of getting those things done if we ever needed that property.
So, you were saying, I think of what I read online in the paper, was this was brought up back in May? I think it's what you said.
I was contacted probably back in May.
In May.
And then we started discussing and talking and trying to put it together.
So, the number, at what point was it's going to cost fifty thousand dollars to do this? When was that brought up? Like, how long ago?
For us, it was brought up three months ago.
Okay, so for the past three months, you said you had two executive sessions.
One executive session, we discussed this, just like we're doing right now, last month and then this month.
Okay, so, pretty much five months out, you had the idea, three months ago, you had an idea of how much it costs. Look at the account tonight, and it's not there. So, you have to look into another one to use fifty thousand dollars out of that to be able to pay the due diligence. So, why was it when three months ago, this was brought up about how much it was going to cost? Why did the planning not start then of if this is going to happen, we need to set this aside? And here we are, three and a half weeks before the deadline.
Probably that's my fault for not voting last month. I'm going to let somebody get the ARPA money.
Well, and two, I mean, that's not.
Decisions made.
That was not a decision that was made, and that was not a decision that I don't think any of us been comfortable with doing it behind closed doors.
No, that's why I said here, not in an executive session.
We're out in the open to make sure that everybody knows what's going on. That's, that's why we're making that decision right now. And I disagree about taking out of ARPA anyway. I'd rather it come out of hotel motel.
Hotel motel tax or looking at other places to say it. What I'm saying is, whenever it was mentioned that it wasn't in the account, Mr. Hartline frustrated that it wasn't there, like.
I wouldn't have went for that anyway. I don't know about anybody else, so.
So, I, I have no problem. This is great for Dade County. A hundred percent great for Dade County because we're known for our outdoor. We have, we have attractions around here we can offer that nobody else can. So, this would be a great addition to it, but we've also had issues where there's not much water in the creek, especially how dry it's been this year. So, how is that going to play into that?
I don't know if that's necessarily true either, though, but, I mean.
But this, this is just, I'll stop here, but this is just public input on to thinking about that before we go in, into saying, yes, we're going to spend fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Because when you buy, when you buy a home or.
I have not seen any evidence.
And is voting on fifty, ten, fifty thousand dollar due diligence on that property. To at some point, if everything plays out, it don't have to be worded that way, that, and the grants come through, we will have a five hundred thousand dollar match to buy a two or three million dollar piece of property.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Goff, did you want me to give my input that you asked for, or should I wait till the next meeting?
No, you can speak now. I mean, we didn't intend to turn this into a public, but, because we usually don't. We're not to that point yet.
Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to express my opinion on this topic because it's very, very important. And we're talking about the possible purchase of six hundred forty-eight acres from the Georgia Alabama Land Trust, and it's got many points to consider. And this is the view from my foxhole, as I've, as I've done my homework on this and as I've talked to people. That, the concept of having an, an outdoor rec area that Commissioner Hartline proposed is definitely worth discussing. There is no doubt about that. Since the last meeting, I've done some homework. I've spent time with Noel. I've spoken to various commi, commissioners here. And I've talked to numerous citizens throughout our community to get their input on this proposal. And here's what I have to share with you tonight. Our citizens, some are for it, some are against, and some are indifferent. You're going to say, well, Bob, that doesn't help much, but that's kind of the way it is.
Always the way.
Right.
We know the.
However, just like four fields back in the day. When four fields was brought up as a proposal, many folks were against it. It's too far away from trend. It won't work and won't go there. Well, I speak of this just as a future commissioner, but also as a father. I know firsthand that four fields is a viable component for our youth in this community, right? And it wouldn't be the same without it, right? And we need to keep that in mind as we're considering this outdoor rec area. I think personally that this outdoor rec area, whatever we're going to call it, right, could be just as important to us as four fields is today. Now, I, I fully support this, but like y'all have been discussing, this purchase must be supported by non-taxpayer revenues. That's kind of a bottom line. Funds, grants, right, commissions, Green Party people of some flavor, right, that want to donate money, that type of revenue needs to help do this. We're all for it. But as we're going down this road, as things were brought up, we have to understand the operation is a maintenance cost. We have to understand if any of these grants provide monies for operation and maintenance. Because sometimes it's just like getting a building. Buying the building is the easy part. Staffing it makes, is the harder part. John, to answer your, your question earlier about input, the forest management plan, if I remember the correct term, we need to hear what our citizens want in their outdoor rec area. I know some, I've heard everything from walking trails, horse trails, an area for kids to go boat hunting, right? Uh, what I call picnic areas with pavilions and those type of things, and maybe an RV park. That would cost money. Entering the park wouldn't, but the RV park would ha, ha, have a cost associated with that. I'm glad to see that our steps for a project completion are here. That will prevent us from having another situation like you've just previously discussed. I think that's excellent, and I think that's, that's a very worthwhile thing, and we'll keep that in mind. And the next thing that everybody expressed to me is that we have to have clear communication throughout this process because just like here tonight with all of us thinking about this, some of it's clear, some of it's not. Well, what about this? What about that? What's the phase of the moon? You, you get the idea here. You know, it can be complicated, and it, it can be very, very hard. The thing about it is this, is that, the last point I'll make. Our citizens enjoy this idea. But they said, Bob, we won't lose sleep over, we lose sleep over our water lines break again and we don't have water. We lose sleep if all of a sudden, uh, electricity's out or the road's tearing up my cars. They lose sleep over that. They wouldn't lose sleep if we don't have another rec area, you understand? So, I've been told numerous times, hey, pursue this, but by gosh, the infrastructure at Dade County has to be the priority. So, here's, here's the, the thing for me. You asked, what would I vote? I would vote in favor of this, right? However, everything I just shared, right, those are the right and left limits that I would lay out. We're going to go down this road, and I don't consider fifty K to be a drop in the bucket. I've handled management of all flavors and sizes my entire life. Fifty K is important, right? But as we go down this road and work with folks to get grants, right, commissions and various things, I think this could be long-term beneficial for Dade County.
Thank you, General. Thank you. All right, do, do you want us to vote up here, or can it go on the consent agenda?
We can do the consent agenda if y'all are good with that.
I, I'm good with whatever. I'm, I think, yeah, I'm good.
Put it on a consent agenda. All right, I think. I'm going to ask this, General. Did you come to speak for anything tonight? And the reason I'm asking is I didn't know if somebody had come for the old courthouse. You, yes.
No.
Okay, we didn't, we didn't have anybody here for, yeah. Cole, Cole didn't show up, and I thought, well, maybe you, because you came in just a little late.
Sorry.
And I wanted to make sure that you.
Disappointing.
Well, it's, it's not disappointing, but I didn't want to close this meeting, and you say, uh, what about the report on the old courthouse?
Good night, sweet prince.
All right, anybody got anything else to say? That, that covers our workshop agenda. So, that being said, we will adjourn this meeting, and in about five minutes, we will begin our regular meeting. Give everybody a chance to get a drink or whatever you need to do. Give everybody a chance to get a drink or whatever you need to do.
...commission to do the business of the county and sometimes we have decisions that we, we just have to make and Lord, we just pray that you would let us do the one that is best for the most people. It never will be what everybody wants, but Lord, we, we pray for that and we pray tonight, especially for our friend, our fellow commissioner Lamar Lowry, for Kathy Lowry, his wife, for his family. Lord, we know Lamar is in need of prayer and Lord, but he needs to just fill your arms. Right now, wrap around him and let him know that that's just how close you are. So Father, we pray that especially tonight for him and we pray for all those people who are going through. Lost family, many, many lost homes. They, Lord, they watched them float down a river. They were gone. When the river finally stopped, the land the home was sitting on was gone. They have nothing. So Lord, let's, let us look tonight and realize that we may feel like we're going through a lot, but when we look at these people tonight, just help us to realize that we need to stop what we're doing and just pray for them and believe that you're going to continue to help them as best you, they can to get back on their feet, back where they need to be because we can only imagine what it's like to be put in that position. And we were there, kind of, a few years ago. But Lord, we've never seen anything like they're experiencing and we pray and hope that they nor us ever experience it again. So Lord, bless the remainder of our meeting tonight, everything we do in this community and our county and in our state. Let it bring glory and honor to you in some way, for we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen. Face the flag. General, would you lead us, please?
Hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, General. This is the regular scheduled meeting of the Dade County Board of Commissioners which takes place at the same time on the first Thursday of every month. Proper notice of this meeting was given in the legal organ of Dade County. It's been posted on the hallway of the administrative building. This time, I'll call the roll and have it recorded by the clerk. Mr. Hartline?
Here.
Ms. Bradford?
Here.
And Vice Chair Goff is here with the absence of Mr. Lowry and also our Chair, Mr. Rumley. So we do have a quorum, therefore it's a legal meeting. Let's just see. All right. We go to citizens' participation. Somebody like to come up. You've got five minutes to come up and talk to us. I know we've had some conversation already, but that was my giving leeway because of a very important issue, but if anybody has anything to come up, please do it this time.
Well, this is not heavy. This is a high note and fluff and happy. It's October, so it's time to talk Christmas parade. And I'm here to announce that our Christmas parade that's sponsored by the Bank of Dade again this year will be held on December the 14th. That's the second Saturday in December, unless it rains and then it'll be the next Saturday, but we're not going to think about that part. We're looking second Saturday in December. Our lineup will begin at 5:00 and it'll be, the lineup will be in the North Industrial Park. The parade itself will begin at 6:00 PM as usual. Our theme this year is the 12 Days of Christmas, but your float or whatever you put in the parade does not have to reflect that. People just like to have a theme, so that's it this year. We ask that you put some kind of lights on a vehicle or a wagon or whatever it is that you enter into the parade. There is absolutely no cost, no fee to register or anything like that. We will ask that if you would, please call me at the bank and just let me know, be you a church, an organization, a club, an individual, a horse, whatever, and kind of let us know so we can sort of prepare and have an idea about the parade and the length of it and that kind of thing. But that's not absolutely necessary either. What else? Anything else, any questions, of course? Anybody got any questions about it?
No.
That is the main thing.
I think it's one of the best things we do, these parades, the homecoming parade, which will be in a couple of weeks and that parade, the little tacks, we'll be handing out candy here in about another, well, end of the month. There's so much goes on. I mean, that's small town America. That's where, that's where everybody gets to see everybody. Thank y'all for.
Oh, and one thing too, the Sheriff's Department, we try to coordinate on the same date. So they will be doing the Christmas crossing over here in the gazebo Veterans Park area the same afternoon. I think it's from 3:00 to 5:00 or 5:30, but there'll be more information. They'll put out more information about that. But we'd just like to invite everybody that wants to come out to either watch or to be in the parade. Just let us know and, and it's for our whole county and it's a great thing. We have a great parade.
We do.
So we appreciate it and thank you for the time.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you for that. At this time, we will hear from our district commissioners. Mr. Hartline?
So for September, we had 28 electrical permits pulled. We had, once again, we had six new houses. We had five new temporaries, three mobile homes and some garages and outbuildings and stuff. We also, Stacy had them to put roofs over all the storm shelters, over the doors. So when you're going, the water's not running off the roof and you're getting flooded before you get into the storm shelter. They got them done. As far as the sports complex goes, football ends October the 10th, soccer ends November the 2nd, and then baseball is October the 7th. And he did say that seven and eight-year-olds, nine and 10 won tournaments a few weeks back. And then I think the next age group up are still playing. I think they're going to go for another couple of weeks. And then he said when the storm come through, we got two point, or 5.29 inches of rain just over that course of what, two days, three days' time of it raining. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Philip. And to put that in perspective, I think maybe Asheville, North Carolina, got 30, 30 inches of rain, six times more than what we got. So that's the reason they're having a lot of problems. All right, Ms. Bradford?
Yeah, I don't have much. We had a meeting with the glass recycling to kind of get a clear picture on how that would work. And I think what we've come up with it, we'll put a, a bend over there and there'll be a code and whoever wants to participate can, there'll be a little bit of a fee per month. And we're going to see how that's going to work out before we jump forward with something larger. Just kind of see who, who participates in that and how much we get, how much feedback we get. But we're still kind of going back and forth with the, with the contract or what we feel would be best. So hopefully, hopefully within this month or possibly next, we'll be able to have that container out there ready to go. And that's about it.
All right. And I will not attempt to speak for what Mr. Rumley's done this month. It's just been a normal month, I know. But I will say that our road department has been busy. If you've been down Back Valley Road and seen that road, it's a lot, a lot of improvement. They've also had some things. I know down in front of the Rising Fawn Community Center down there, had a sinkhole they've had to work on and this different thing coming up like that, but they've been real, real busy and we're getting close to the end of mowing season. They'll be out. And this time when they mow, I think, pretty sure I'm right, they will mow all the way back. Sometimes we just mow one strip and leave it till the end of the year, but everything, the right of way will be mowed, not over onto people's property. So just a normal month. I usually report on Splosh, but I'm looking at Ted's book and not my, my thing. But I think we were some 216,000 maybe this month, which was down a little from last month. But again, it's, it's great that people are spending in, in Dade County and all these things that we, that we look at doing, we have the opportunity to do because of that. I will, I forgot to mention earlier when I was talking about people going down, keep Alex Case in your prayers as well. Now, the State Director of Safety, whatever, called and wanted some counties, if they could, to allow their EMA directors to go down and help. And he's down near Vidalia. I'm not sure. I don't remember what city he said he was in, but he's down helping them out because they needed more people to assist. It's so bad down there that they needed. So he thanked the county, he thanked us for allowing him to go down. And so I don't think anybody would have said no, because we would have been asking for the same thing had everything been shifted just a little bit to the west. So keep Alex and all those people in your prayers as well. And that's all I have. So we will now go to appearance. We have an in-person presentation by our library, Ms. Lydia Soucy. Did I say that right? Is Soucy, Soucy?
Soucy.
Soucy? If you knew Soucy like I knew Soucy.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for having me tonight. My name's Lydia. I'm the manager of the Dade County Public Library. First, I will start with our September month stats. In the month of September, our door count was 2,244. Our computer use was at 214. Our printer use was at 596. Our study room use was up to 109 and our time with teachers has moved back up to 30. Next slide. It's okay. This year, we are celebrating our 80th birthday. Dade County Library has been a part of this community for the past 80 years. During the month of October, we are having several celebrations. We are sending historical articles to our newspaper, Dade Sentinel, showcasing the past 80 years of the library's history. We are hosting a bookmark contest for the children of Dade County. In November, on November 5th through 8th, we will be having a week-long celebration of our library's progress throughout the years. On November 8th will be our biggest celebration. We will have guest speakers, music and cake cutting, along with a display showcasing all of our history. And we would like to invite you there. All right. We are having a bookmark, bookmark contest. This was for the children of Dade County. Our, we extended the entries to tomorrow, October, yep, October 4th. Our voting for the bookmarks will take place on October 8th through the 18th and it is in person. So we invite you to come down to our library to look at the bookmarks. We have a lot of entries, all the kids. It was great seeing their artistic inputs on our library and celebrating the 80 years. All right. Starting this month, we are launching a new program, What the Body Knows, which is led by Claire. Every Wednesday from 10:30 to 11:30, Claire will be guiding participants through movement exploration using improvisational movement to promote health and well-being. We have a special story time taking place on Tuesday, October 8th. Laura Cunningham from Georgia 4H and Farm Bureau, Georgia, will be hosting and she will be reading a book, Lucy Meets a Lager by Stephanie Fuller, followed by a fun craft. And this story time takes place every second Tuesday of the month. This month, we have crafting with kids. It'll take place on October 15th at 4:00 PM. Pre-registration is required for this program. Lynn will be guiding children and their special adults who will be crafting together and making pumpkin, paper pumpkins. Also this month, on Tuesday, October 22nd, we have a cricket workshop. We will hold the cricket workshop, excuse me, at 5:00 PM. This program also requires pre-registration. The Dade County Library will be taking part in this year's Trick or Treat on the Square. We will be opening our doors between 5:30 and 7:30 PM and we look forward to seeing everybody that evening. Right. November, on November 7th at 4:00 PM, our kids' club will be all about science. Lynn will be showing and guiding the children through a lava lamp experiment. And then we have a new story posted up at Jenkins Park. The story is The Big Dance. We have had four responses to our survey so far this month. We have had three Dade County residents respond to the survey and one out-of-state resident. In this month, we would also like to welcome in two new, two new tutors, excuse me, Betty McCurdy and Jennifer Lynch. They joined our Time with Tutor program. This is, we've had an increase in need and parents reaching out wanting to take advantage of this free program in Dade County where we provide free tutoring sessions for our Dade and Walker County students. And for any further news and information about what our library is doing, we invite you to visit our website at chrl.org and our Facebook and Instagram pages as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, if you go back and do some history on that 80 years, you're in the Taj Mahal to what some of those libraries were.
Yes. No, I've loved learning what I have about the library. It's a beautiful history. One of my favorites was learning about the Bookmobile. I didn't realize how large that vehicle was. So I was thinking to myself, I would have enjoyed driving that until I saw the size. I'm like, nobody would have wanted me behind the wheel of that vehicle.
Rolling library.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. And there's two online presentations, if you care to look, and I would advise you to. Sandy White, President and CEO of Dade, Alliance for Dade. Because if you want to know what's happening in Dade County, she's got it there in living color to, on anything going on. If she missed it, I don't know what it could be. And also, a presentation by Ms. Laura Beth Cunningham, our 4H agent has an online presentation. All righty, we will go.
Steven.
Oh, that's right. We amended it. I hear I'm sitting here all this time just waiting. We did amend the, it's, it's not on our agenda. We did amend the agenda at the beginning of our work session because Stephen has something that he needs to report in the actual meeting.
So, Limestone Valley Resource Conservation and Development Council in partnership with Dade County and the City of Trenton. So those of you that double attend, you'll get to hear this presentation again at the city meeting on the 15th. But we have a Clean Water Act grant funded through the Environmental Protection Agency, passed through dollars to the State of Georgia Environmental Protection Division. That's the fine print there at the bottom. I'm going to go to next slide. This is, we are in Phase 3 currently and Phase 2 of this federal grant. Little background on it, there is, there are sections of the creek that are listed for various reasons, for need for improvement, whether it be due to fish habitat, typically caused by sedimentation, or due to increased levels of E. coli. And so, once we identify and we have, we have a community action plan called a watershed management plan. In that management plan, we identify certain criteria, next slide, please, certain criteria that will address the non-point source pollution. I'm trying to keep it fast for you.
We like it.
We want to understand.
You want to understand it? I'll slow it down. I'll slow it down. I'll just slur my words. So non-point source pollution is pollution that you can't particularly identify the exact cause. That's dripping from the car, that's, that's the blowing trash that happened to fall out of somebody's pocket. That sediment from maybe ditches and road cuts. You've all seen different places where, you know, you have erosion happening or there's bare ground that dirt's going into the creek. That's all considered non-point source pollution. Whereas point source pollution would be something where you can go, hey, look, there's a pipe. Wow, what's that? So kind of an easy delineation there. But this grant that we are administering works to particularly improve aspects in the community that will benefit water quality associated with non-point source. So we're not going out to the factory and saying, hey, here's the, here's the issue. We're looking to reduce those sediment loads. We're, we're looking to, like we did, this grant funded the parking lot over, in partnership with the city, over at Jenkins Park. It has, it has particulars that we'll mention here in a moment that help with the community runoff. Things that the folks in North Carolina and East Tennessee right now are going to be building back with these different designs because they reduce the amount of surface flow, they slow the water down, they help, they help the water infiltrate in such a way that it's, it's not cutting and eroding. Storm events, I don't want to make light of, storm events like that in North Carolina, even the best management practices are going to have negative impacts on. But the day-to-day storms that we have, we look to build the best way possible in order to reduce those impacts and improve our drinking water, our playing water, all the different things that we enjoy in the community associated with water. So, without just reading your slides, you're welcome to go out and check out the, the slides online. We'll move to the next slide. Pollution reduction strategies identified in the watershed management plan, which was written with public input. We held public meetings, not saying they were attended well, but if you want your voice heard, come to the meetings. We held, we held public meetings. We put together a nine-element plan through the EPA model using a national template, which secured us funding. We have now put, we've now put close to $700,000 into the community right here in Dade County, specific to septic repairs. Some, some community members listening tonight may have been helped out with our septic repair program. Septic repair program is currently active. If you have a failing septic system, squishy yard, gurgly pipes, and, and you think you may need to repair your septic, there's currently a grant, if you live in the, in the Lookout Creek drainage. So Brow Road to Brow Road and a few little tucks between. That will fund up to 40% of the landowner's cost to fix their septic. What, what's good for your yard is good for your neighbor's yard because, well, we won't go into what's in all that septic that's running off into your neighbor's place that. So septic repairs is a major aspect of our Clean Water Act grant, as well as agricultural best management practices. So we've partnered farmers across, across the watershed to help out with installing things on their farms that are ultimately going to reduce the amount of manure runoff. They're going to provide watering sources so that the, say cows aren't walking down the stream bank causing erosion that then starts a cut that then eats into a road. It's, it's a slippery slope, pun intended. So, as well as we have, we have worked on green infrastructure projects. So those are just stats if we want to, hmm, okay. Yeah. We're ready to roll to the next one. So those are some stats for you on some of the volume of work that we've done thus far and are continuing to do. So stormwater and green infrastructure. Do I have anything? Great. You have the template version. There's two more slides, but I'll get that so you can post it on the website and I will ad lib from here as if I wasn't already. Stormwater and green infrastructure are, are what I was starting to mention a moment ago. The way that we build in order to slow water down, in order to reduce the sedimentation and reduce the erosion that happens in our waterways. So an example of that would be some stream bank stabilization. Last year, we installed a, a stormwater runoff system behind the courthouse. All of those gutters were causing erosion behind the courthouse. That erosion was eating towards the bank of the courthouse or towards the foundation of the courthouse. We partnered with the county. We caught that water. We put it into an infiltration bay where the water is able to go into a rock chamber, settle in, be absorbed by trees, bushes, and what you and I might call landscaping, and then slowly run off into the creek or overflow into the creek. So that's just one example of where we're able to stop a problem while creating a future solution. That's green infrastructure in action. Stream bank stabilization is another example of green infrastructure. The Jenkins Parking Lot, another example of green infrastructure. And with that said, those are the three facets of our, I take that back. We also do community outreach. We do trash cleanup. We've done that in partnership with UGA 4H. We go, we pick up garbage because as I mentioned, that garbage out there ends up in the creek. Anybody who's seen, finding Nemo knows, all water flows to the, you know, it all goes to the ocean. In our case, it all goes to Lookout Creek. And so those cigarette butts, trash bags, all those things, we go, we pick those up in partnership with, with UGA 4H. And I'll say, John Huffman was here. He left. He has come out to some of those events. You know, we have great community engagement across, across the spectrum on those cleanups and we really appreciate just cleaning up our community. So aside from the cleanups and that sort of thing, one facet of our grant is we present to the public some of the things that we are doing. And the last piece that we have, for those who do enjoy public input, is we have a survey on limestonevalley.org that you can go out, it's right at the very top on the left-hand side, kind of center-left. You can go out there, select it. It's just, it's a, I want to say we've got 10 questions up there regarding, you know, what your feelings are on clean water. Maybe, maybe you don't like clean water. That's, you know, that's just people. But asking questions related to Lookout Creek specifically, your feelings on clean water, your feelings on future funding, if you think that, if you think we should continue to pursue, you know, your tax dollars that were sent to Washington to come back here to make your place better. I'm personally a proponent of that, but I'm a little biased. I like it here and want it to be nice. So we have that out there if you want to check that out. And then I think, I think that's it. I'll save the last slide for, for a teaser for, for the Trenton meeting. It's a little bit more focused on municipal, what they call MS4 permitting. So we'll save that one for those of you who just can't wait to hear from the Trenton meeting. Any questions or interest in clean water?
What does RC and D mean on this?
Resource Conservation and Development Council. We were founded in 1975 as a, as a federal agency. In 2001, no, excuse me, 2011, through an act of Congress, we were spun off as an independent nonprofit, ourselves as well as all across the nation. We were formerly a part of the USDA. The USDA pulled staff back into other backfill positions as a way to workforce adjust and spun the RC and D councils off as independent nonprofits. Limestone Valley has 11 council, or 11 county commissions that appoint our board members. And so we are still a pseudo-governmental organization. In the state of Georgia, the RC and Ds are the only nonprofits that are statutorily allowed to apply for Clean Water Act dollars because EPD does not allocate funds to, does not allocate funds to nonprofits. But the RC and D councils act as a proxy for and technical support to the counties of which they serve with the government board being our director.
Thank you.
Yeah.
How much money do you have left in your septic tank repairs?
Quite a bit. Yeah. We, we have not gone through half of our septic money yet. So if somebody has a, if somebody has a septic tank that needs repair, I would encourage you to contact our public health department, talk to either Rachel or Kristen, and they can get you a repair permit, which is half the cost of a, of a new build permit. And with that permit, she can connect you with our project manager, Matt, or myself, but I'm going to refer you to Matt. And, and we will help you through the process of making sure that those funds get allocated to your project.
It, I used it. It was fantastic. Every, the process was very, very easy. It was, it's great.
It, it is available to any, any, any landowner in the county. That is in the watershed. We have had a few people that have called that live just outside of the watershed. We also had a similar project that covered Chattanooga Creek. And so people that lived on one side of West Brow Road, on Lookout Mountain, were getting funded through one funding allocation. And those that lived on the, the other side were getting funded through the other. So we do everything we can to try to leverage the dollars from Washington that come to the state of Georgia to put them back. You may have heard a theme with me tonight. I like to get our money back from the government. So that's, that's how that program works. Any other comments, questions? Great. I'm done for the day.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. And just so everybody'll know, Congresswoman Marjorie Taylor-Green was at the high school at 6:00, but you got to come over and hear Stephen Monaco. And I'm sure, I guess some, maybe y'all were at that meeting. Was it a good, a good meeting? But it did happen to be on our meeting day. All right. We will go right on into fiscal matters and we will ask our deputy. matters, and we will ask our deputy clerk to please go over the monthly financial report.
Okay, we have the account balance as of September 31st. The general fund had a balance of $283,552. The general fund CDs had a balance of 1.8 million for a total balance of $2,083,552. The sheriff's special fund had a balance of $2,586. Drug Abuse Education Fund, $11,683. Supplemental Juvenile Services Fund, $29,997. Victim Assistance Fund, $1,679. The jail fund, $18,860. The American Rescue Plan, ARPA, had a balance of $594,136. Accommodations, hotel motel tax, had a balance of $308,872. The employee's flexible spending had a balance of $31,903. And the payroll account had a balance of $232,602. Our 2015 SLOSH Funds project account had a balance of $61,024. And our debt services account, 2015 SLOSH, had a zero, zero-dollar balance. The 2021 SLOSH Funds project account had a balance of $299,598. And the proceeds account had a balance of $2,159,697. The next page shows the revenues for the month of August and year-to-date. For August, we had collected $646,463. We budgeted $632,879, so we were actually in excess, so we collected $13,584,000 more. Year-to-date, we've collected $1,736,831. We've budgeted $1,709,425. So, we're in excess of $27,406. The next page is your expenses for the month and for the year-to-date. For the month of August, we spent $1,177,631. We budgeted $1,189,646. So, we were under budget by $12,014. Year-to-date is $2,674,009 is what we had spent. We budgeted $2,728,255, which makes us under budget for year-to-date at $54,245. The next two pages is the SLOSH report for the last couple of years. Look at the second page. You see, for September, we collected $253,446.72. And then, the next two pages are the SLOSH reports. And for the month of September 24, we collected $316,808.92. The next couple of reports show your 2021 SLOSH and 2015 SLOSH, the detail of both of those. And then, your final page there is the Dade County Tax Commissioner's collection, year-to-date as of August 31st, and she had collected $229,720 that equated to about 3.71% of total collection. And that's the final.
Thank you, Rebecca. Do you want to have any questions for Rebecca concerning? I do have something I'd like to mention, if you can make a note of it, and I think it'd be in order, because the ARPA money has to be, we have till December 31st. Most of it is gone. There's very little of it left.
Of that balance, we have about $500,000.
And it's, it's confusing. We keep reading the ballots when there's not near that. That money, just so everybody knows, the money didn't have to be spent necessarily right now. It had to be earmarked by the last day of the year. So, we've earmarked it on things like fire trucks and that, that have not yet even come in, but that money's in the bank when they do. So, when we read that, it's like there's still a lot of money in it, and it needs to, the side needs to have, I think, it needs to have the, what is left in that fund, the balance of what's left in that fund, because it's not, it's not a lot at all. So, if, if that can be done, I just think it'd be something good to, because it's going to be, at the end of the year, it's not really going to matter anyway, but it will let us know how much we got in. If there's no more, no, no other questions, then I will entertain a motion to approve the physical, the financial report is read.
I'll make a motion to approve is read.
I'll second.
Second? Okay, we have a second, a motion and second. So, we'll call the roll. Mr. Hartline?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Mr. Lowery, Mr. Rumney are not present. It passes. Robin, do we have any legal matters?
We don't, Mrs. Sharon.
No unfinished business, so, that I know of, so we go to new business, and we will ask our clerk to give us a consideration of all items on the workshop agenda.
Okay. We have the approval of agenda as presented, the approval of previous meeting minutes, the review of the personnel status report, the proclamation for Breast Cancer Awareness Month of October, and the proclamation for Fire Prevention Week, which is October 6th through the 12th. We have the results of appealing the 2023 statewide equalization, 100% digest in Dade County sales ratio study. And it appealed to, our COD is now at 14.91, which is passing. We have number 10, which is, it's a cooperative project between the Dade County Commission and the Tennessee Valley Authority for the Sittins Mill Dam site on Lookout Creek at Sales Lane. And we have the Resolution R-27-24, which concerns the Dade County Community Forest, and Robin's going to read the resolution.
R-27-24 is resolved that Dade County agrees to commit $50,000 in earnest money and submit a pre-application for funding from the Land and Water Conservation Fund. Dade County further agrees that in the event that Dade County's pre-application is recommended for funding by the Department of Natural Resources that Dade County certifies and assures that it has ability and intention to finance its 50% of the total project cost up to $500,000, and will move forward with due diligence to prepare or have prepared appropriate documentation required for a formal LWCL application.
And then, we have one more. The declaration of surplus county property to be put on, sold on gov deals. It's a 1989 International Model 7100 truck and a 2009 GMC 5500 truck. And that concludes.
All right, do you want to have any questions concerning the, the workshop agenda, what we had passed? Now, I'll entertain a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
All right. All righty then, we will, we have a, a motion and a second, and we'll vote on it. Mr. Hartline?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. We do not have any, anything for an executive session, so if there's nothing else on this bench, then we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second? I'll second. You want to stay?
I thought you said second.
Oh, that's for a second. I'll second. His mo, his emotion.
Yeah.
All right. Thank everybody for being here, and be safe. Pray for those people that we've talked about. Meeting adjourned.